Very good. And I spoke with them a little bit before and I've encouraged them to participate not only in sharing about the school, but to share opinions and thoughts with us, too.
Is Maggie's last name Potter? Maggie, let me tell you a little story. My daughter was on her way home from school the next day were school photos. She was in first or second grade. She had a really loose front tooth. And I said, "Just make it home. Just make it home so tomorrow you have a tooth in the picture." And one Timmy Potter knocked his head against Little Paige's face and she lost her tooth. Came home with the biggest hole in her face that I've ever seen.
Apologies for my brother.
Your brother can do no wrong. No. I had him as a student. Great guy.
Okay. First matter of business is consent agenda. We have the regular school committee meeting minutes from August 15th. We're gonna try to do these together.
Do them all together if you'd like.
Okay. Also, the regular meeting from August 23rd. Glasses on, yep. And a regular meeting from September 5th. I'll entertain a motion to effect.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular school committee dated August 15th, August 23rd, September 5th, all of 2017.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made and seconded. Any corrections that you found or comments?
Just that the meeting of August 23rd was actually a special meeting and not a regular meeting, and I don't know if that matters legally. And that's what it says at the top of the notes, that it was a special meeting.
Oh, okay.
That wasn't one of our -- I don't think that matters as long as everyone agrees that that's fine.
Right. I think when we post the meeting, I think it was posted as a regular meeting.
Okay.
I think it's a minor.
Okay.
As long as the date's correct on the meeting. That was the only time we met that day.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. So, no further discussion. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstention, saying none was unanimous? All right. This is the time for public input. When you come forward, would you please give your name and address? And if there are several speakers, it would be helpful to keep things moving along if you could just make us, if you weren't gonna say essentially the same thing, just say you support the previous speaker, but, you know, not become repetitive. So if someone would like to address the committee at this time, I'm glad to hear you.
It's your timeline. Time frame, Mr. Chairman.
We'll see how it goes.
Is that okay there?
Yeah. You don't have to speak right into it.
Okay. Well, thank you for letting me speak here. My name's Allison Barnes, and I'm a parent of two children with special needs in this district. And I support families in the town through my own preschool. Not listing my address because I provide daycare at my home, so I prefer to keep that that way. So I'm here to talk about the parent support currently available for the over 800 students considered part of the special needs population. There have been parents that have been working with Amy Reese, Student Services Director, to help create an active CPAC. Because there hasn't been public information about the CPAC, I wanted to read some things that parents in the district might not know. That way, it's on record for their review. The following are excerpts from the Guidance for Special Education Parent Advisory Councils. It's a document prepared by DESE. The information reads, "A CPAC is a special education parent advisory council that each public school district is required by law to allow parents to participate in and manage. A PAC directs its own activities in cooperation and collaboration with the school district. The PAC is authorized to provide advice to the district regarding special education programs and policies, and that advice may include recommendations verbally or in writing to those parties in the district responsible for overseeing special education, including the Special Education Director, Superintendent, and School Committee. And the district must take whatever steps are necessary to ensure there's a district-wide Special Education Parent Advisory Council, also known as a PAC, in operation." So before I continue, I'd like to define the status of CPAC in Chelmsford. Is there one, a CPAC, currently and lawfully recognized by the school committee?
Yes.
Yeah, but this is not like a back and forth.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know. So I guess, to answer my own question, I and other parents are not aware if there is a CPAC or not.
I'm not curious. You run the CPAC web, Facebook page.
I agree. There's been issues with communication where parents have been trying to find out how things are going, and there's an interim board that Ms. Reese appointed that is not communicating with the parents. Most of the communications have been coming from Ms. Reese. So because of that, I was hoping to share kind of things that have been happening over the last year and maybe suggest steps that could be taken. So as Ms. Scott mentioned, there is a group on Facebook that I'm an admin of and created last November 2016. It's open to anyone in the community. However, you have to be a member of Facebook and then join the group to be able to see any of the posts there, so it's not truly public communication. Shortly following the creation of that group and based on parent interest, Ms. Reese held a meeting in November 2016 that discussed the functions of CPAC and how to set one up. And it coincided with a meeting she was going to have anyway called the Meet the Students' -- excuse me, Meet Student Services Director. And part of that meeting, we discussed that a subcommittee should be formed to help oversee CPAC development. I don't know if that meeting was supposed to follow open meeting laws. There were, as far as I know, there wasn't an agenda posted or minutes shared publicly. And again, I'm stating this for the parents who aren't aware. The requirements of the state's open meeting laws apply to PAC meetings since PAC is considered an advisory council to the school committee. So the two interim board people were appointed by Ms. Reese, and it's my understanding their purpose was to set up the initial set of bylaws, and that would help them to oversee the election of a CPAC board. There was evidence of those bylaws presented at a meeting on March 2nd, 2017. That board, the appointed board, consists of Moira Malavich and Jen Bartleman. My apologies if I'm saying their names wrong. According to a Facebook post made by Ms. Malavich, she's a parent in the district who's an active member of other parent organizations like PTO. And Ms. Bartleman is also a parent in the district, and she's an employee of Chelmsford Public Schools as a para. And it's my understanding if she's working at a para, as a para, that makes her a subordinate to Ms. Reese. And I'd like to stress it this time, part of the CPAC's purpose is to serve as an advising council to Ms. Reese. On May 6th, Ms. Reese stated, in a Facebook post again, quote, "We have bylaws to start," end quote. This conflicts with statements from both the March and the November meetings, which involved discussion by the parents in attendance that a subcommittee would be formed to review the proposed bylaws. It's to my knowledge that that was never done. This means that a parent team that had no public communication and almost no input for members in the CPAC finalized bylaws without respect to the needed elective representation. Subsequently, some of the parents involved formed an auxiliary group, which was the Chelmsford Parent Support Group. And again, it's an inclusive group. It's not open to the entire community. It's restricted to parents and guardians in the district who either have a child with suspected or diagnosed special needs. That group was created so that parents had an immediate and confidential support network available while we were waiting for official CPAC meetings to occur. The Parent Support Group formed first as an online forum and then began having in-person meetings, which we have been having biweekly since April 2017. And within our meetings, the parent support groups have some, come up with some great ideas to support the district and the teachers and the therapists, give information to the students, and also provide support to the parents in Chelmsford. However, without having meetings or knowing that there is an approved and active CPAC in town, we weren't able to help implement any of those actions. On August 15th, representatives from the Parents' Group had a meeting with Ms. Reese and John Moses, a school committee member. The interim team were invited, but Ms. Reese reported they were not to be in attendance. They both had conflicting schedules. Ms. Reese stated the interim board and herself met early in the year for a planning meeting to work on the bylaws. And at our meeting, the Parents' Group suggested dates for the 2017-18 school year meetings and requested that a public announcement be made to invite interested parties who would like to serve on the interim board to be able to do so. Ms. Reese stated she would speak to the interim board about those two issues and that while she's, she is not responsible for running CPAC since it's a parent-led organization. And between now and the meeting where the interim board attended on March 2nd, the interim board has not publicly communicated directly with parents in the district, specifically in regards to CPAC functions and actions. The most successful communication has been consistently with Ms. Reese. She's been working as an intermediary between the parents who are active in the Parent Support Group and interested in supporting an active CPAC in town and the interim board, which it's a bit of a contradiction since CPAC is supposed to be run by the parents. The board should be serving as an intermediary between parents and the district. Related to CPAC functions, again stating this for parents who are not aware, DESE conducted a coordinated program review last March, and that report includes information on CPAC and its status. And it's my understanding of that process that a leader from CPAC would be questioned as a part of that review if there was an active and recognized CPAC, or a waiver would have been filed. So when those, let's see, if the PAC could just end with some key points. Trying to keep it short, however, since parents haven't had access to the information, I'm trying to get in a lot here in a shortened amount of time. To my knowledge, these statements are true at this time. The meeting dates have been set for this school year and posted in the CPAC group on Facebook. They have, will be held the fourth Tuesday of each month at 6:30 PM at the Chelmsford High School Career Center. That was changed from the original time of 7:00 PM. Today, Ms. Reese sent out a connected email stating some information about that first meeting. No meeting minutes from the, excuse me, November 2016 and March 2017 meetings have been posted or shared in accordance to open meeting laws. Again, it's unclear to me if that's required for those meetings or not. It is required for future meetings. The bylaws approved by CPAC board on December 12th, 2007 have not been dissolved. There's been no public announcement of who the current interim board is and how to contact them. No public announcement has been sent inviting interested parties to serve as members on a board, an interim board or a subcommittee. No information has been posted about what possible board or subcommittee positions will be. No updates on progress of developing bylaws have been made since March 2017. No request or invitation has been made for interested parties to be added to the agenda for September 26th meeting. And currently, no CPAC is listed as a parent organization on the Chelmsford Public Schools. Ms. Bartleman about the upcoming CPAC meeting to be held on September 26th. Ms. Reese asked me to be an appointed person on the interim board, and I'm humbled that she considered me. At this time, I'd like to go on record as offering my time to help get this organization up and running, and I would serve gladly on a fairly elected board or subcommittee in accordance to the standing bylaws. There are other parents in the district who would also be interested in offering their time, not all speaking tonight, but there are some here to demonstrate their interest. To quote parents from the district, spoken quote, "I went to last year's meeting, I believe in November, and there were a lot of parents stepping up to volunteer, myself included, and I've never been contacted by anyone. I know there are parents in this group that have attended CPAC trainings and want to be a part of the process," end quote. Another parent states, quote, "It sounds like Chelmsford may be a bit outside the norm since we did have so many interested parents in volunteering for this effort. It's a shame we're a year in with no real public knowledge of what is going on and why the delays are occurring," end quote. There are surrounding districts whose parents have worked together to get an up-and-running CPAC, including bylaws and elected members, in just four weeks' time. Setting up the CPAC in Chelmsford should be happening at a faster pace, and it should be parent-driven. Waiting 10 months for the parents who volunteered to be appointed to make things happen isn't acceptable. Our children have special needs all day, every day, and they need representation all day, every day. So I realize I'm, this is not a discussion, but parents are wondering what parents are going to be running the CPAC meeting next week, and how can they contact those parents? Because right now, that's not known.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any who else would like to address the committee?
Same people.
Good evening, Dr. Lang, Dr. Hirsch, School Committee, students. My name is Laurie McCarron. I reside at Eight Larson Circle in Chelmsford. I have been a resident of the town for nine years. I have four children in the Chelmsford Public Schools. Three of them receive special education services. I am here tonight to address the topic of Chelmsford CPAC. I could not hear the last speaker, so I ask for your patience, and I have a seven-minute statement to read. I realize that no questions can be answered during this part of the forum, therefore, I will address the facts as they have been presented to parents. If you have questions, I will note them and ask parents to bring them forward during a CPAC business meeting. To date, there have been no public meeting posts or connect ed correspondence regarding a Chelmsford CPAC open meeting for the 2017-2018 school year. I actually have an update to that that I would like to add, that a connect ed email went out today from the Director of Student Services regarding an invite to the first CPAC meeting. For those unaware of what CPAC stands for, Special Education Parent Advisory Council. Part of the CPAC's function is to advise the school committee on matters that pertain to the education and safety of students with disabilities. More details can be found in Chapter 71B Massachusetts Special Ed Law. Massachusetts by law must have a CPAC established by the school committee, you. Unless there is no parent interest, and in that matter, a waiver of no interest or alternate compliance may be submitted by the district to the Department of Education for approval. I am here to state for the record that there is and has been a positive interest from parents that have attempted to be actively involved and participate in a CPAC's process of establishment or re-establishment in the District of Chelmsford for 10 months. I would like to move to the facts, as parents know them to be true. According to public record, there were over 800 students receiving special education services, according to a 2015-2016 Public School Coordinated Program Review found in the Department of Education reports. There are roughly 150 members on the Chelmsford Special Education Yahoo Group link located on the Chelmsford Public School website. It has been an ongoing issue that this link is not active or updated regularly, and that Yahoo possibly has been bought, possibly no longer an independent company. There are roughly 180 members that belong to a social media page related to a Chelmsford CPAC interest. Assuming most of those members are special education parents, that leaves a great majority of parents without access to knowledge of special education services, resources, and support. There is no record of a Chelmsford CPAC listed with MasPAC. It has been suggested that Chelmsford CPAC join MasPAC this current school year. A basic rights workshop was not conducted in Chelmsford last school year, to the parents' knowledge. It has been suggested that a basic rights workshop be conducted at the earliest possible time this current school year. A November Meet the Director meeting was held on November 29th, 2016, in which Amy Reese, Director of Student Services, presented a PowerPoint presentation. All special education team chairs attended. Programs in the district were presented. A discussion of what CPAC is and what is needed to establish took place. It is noted in the February 7th, 2017 School Committee Notes under New Business Number Five CPAC, with a memo that was read by Dr. Lang from Amy Reese. This memo clearly states, "What is next?" Along with that, it was a great turnout of parents that attended, and a group of parents expressed an interest in being board members. In August 2017, a group of parents met with Amy Reese with an agenda of introductions, questions, concerns, and proposals. The concerns regarding the PAC included: lack of parent involvement, no updates, slow to no movement, lack of transparency, lack of collaboration, conflict of interest concerns, no scheduled business meetings, location of any previous business meeting notes from 2016-2017 school year, the most current bylaws that were voted on by an elected CPAC board. The questions included: the direction of the Chelmsford CPAC. Who was overseeing that? What was the plan for the upcoming school year? Where can parents turn to for answers or resolutions? How can parents help to move things along in a positive, productive manner to ensure a fair and functioning CPAC? A proposal of 2017-18 meeting dates was requested to be sent out to parents in August. In the interest of, one, moving forward, moving this process forward in a positive and productive, inclusive manner, and, two, to the best interest of a successfully established CPAC for the 2017-18 school year, a suggestion for all is: next steps. These suggestions should include: a public notice and connect ed to be sent out to parents and all interested parties in the district regarding the CPAC's establishment or re-establishment, along with the scheduled dates, times, locations, agenda, and details related to an open CPAC business meeting. If a board, or subcommittee, or interim team has been selected, appointed, voted on, their information is to be included, along with how to contact them, in a public notice and in the agenda. CPAC bylaws should be presented at the first open CPAC meeting, including where they can be found, located, accessed by the public. These bylaws should be the most current bylaws amended by an elected CPAC board. The year of the bylaws should not be a factor and would provide an efficient guide for the CPAC. These next step suggestions help to ensure true transparency and true collaboration for setting up a successful CPAC foundation. From there, parents are able to have a solid structure to then make motions to vote on matters pertaining properly establishing a PAC. These are suggested for the best interest of a CPAC. I would like to close by saying, Chelmsford has been quoted as having great programs to offer students with special needs. We have an involved special education director that has taken the time to listen to parents. This is what is needed in order to build that bridge of communication between the parents and the district. That bridge of communication, collaboration, and respect is what a CPAC is all about. Thank you for your time.
I'd just like to comment that we spent 25 minutes on two speakers, and a normal presentation is around five minutes, and people on the board are looking at me. I was very tolerant because this is new to us, but if people are gonna present the same information, I'm gonna cut the time substantially. Thank you.
Feel free to cut me off. My name is Donna Newcomb. I'm a resident, 16 Janet Road. I am one of the interim co-chairs of CPAC, and I would like to thank Ms. Barnes, Ms. McCarron for their comments. I think that as someone who has been advising the interim CPAC board over the last several months, I think that many of these concerns will be addressed at the first meeting. I would love a copy of the next steps because I think that those are important things to, you know, have as we go forward. I think any collaboration between the groups and the Chelmsford Public Schools and Special Education Department is imperative. I think that this is gonna be a tremendously successful and helpful group. I think there's many involved parents who are looking for direction and ways to best advocate for their children, and I think that CPAC will be a wonderful opportunity to have that information be shared and give tools to the parents that need them to go forward, as I said, in working successfully with the school system to make sure that their kids are as successful as they can possibly be. The first CPAC meeting is a week from today. It is, I'm sorry, I have to look, I believe it's from 7:00 to 8:30 in the Career Center at the high school. And I certainly would welcome everybody to attend, and I look forward to working with CPAC and the school committee and the parents of Chelmsford to make sure that we're doing everything we possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I just would like to mention that Amy Reese has posted the completed calendar of meetings for this year on the CPAC Facebook page. So if you're a parent who has children with special needs, you might wanna look to the top of the Facebook page and click on the pin. They're just pinned there, and they drop right down. And please join the page. There's lots of great information. I see daily posts from one of the co-chairs of the CPAC and other members of the CPAC. So it's got a wealth of information.
Any who else would like to address the committee at this time?
No, just briefly. And again, I do appreciate everyone coming to speak. The format of this part of the meeting doesn't really tend to like a back-and-forth dialogue. But, you know, what I will say is, I know Chelmsford, for years, had had a very active CPAC throughout, you know, probably the 80s and 90s into the 2000s, and then there was a lull. We're kind of stopped for a while. And then I know there was a lot of interest last year in trying to revive the CPAC and get it to really function again, and I credit everyone that was willing to step up and really help out with that. I think Amy Reese, who joined the district last year, one of her charges that we kinda gave her was to try to help and facilitate the work of the group. It really is a parent group, and it needs to be a parent-run organization, obviously supported by the admin as much as we can in guidance, and I think that's what Amy's been trying to do on an interim basis. But I really do thank everyone who stepped up to help out on an interim-type basis. I think, again, I don't know if it was today, yesterday, there was an announcement of the first meeting, and I do think the meeting schedule is out there. I think this is a great conversation to really probably have more at that meeting when everyone is there, because I think that will be the group that's really gonna be focused on these issues and making the group as productive as possible for the 17-18 school year and beyond. So I did wanna make one correction. I believe the meeting is, it is next Tuesday, but it's at 6:30 and not 7 o'clock in the Career Center at Chelmsford High School. I think that was what was in the announcement today. So it's certainly opened up, you know, any parent or grandparent with a child in the Chelmsford Public Schools that has special needs, or any one interested in that particular area, you know, certainly welcome to attend. I plan on trying to attend the first session also and just kinda hear what's happening. I think the conversation, you know, tonight is a good conversation, but I think it'll actually be more productive and probably fruitful in that particular forum, as the group really tries to re-establish itself. From the school perspective, we're certainly gonna support the work, and it's good to have that open communication and collaboration with the parents, but this really does need to be a parent-run organization. So we'll help, we'll assist, we'll empower the group to really do some substantial work. But I do think the format will tend itself much better next week when those meetings kick off. So I just wanted to share that and thank the speakers this evening. And like I said, I'll actually try to make that first meeting as well, along with Amy to kinda hear what the group is gonna work on this year.
I just want to say that it was a pleasure working with the CPAC this past year. Dennis King is now the liaison to the CPAC, so if you have any questions, you might direct them to Dennis. You're welcome, Dennis.
Can I make a comment? So I've been dealing on the other half of this issue. There's the CPAC half, and then there's the Parents' Support Group. And I have to say, there is a large quantity of parents. And granted, this is a parent-run organization, but I have also not seen any communication from CPAC. And I've had to sit down with Amy Reese. I've had to come to the office. So I'm hoping that this meeting and that Donna works on making this a little more transparent. The Parents' Support Group is a large organization. They have a pretty good amount of members. They have a pretty good amount of members, and I've been on and receiving into some of that frustration, and I totally get it. So I just think that hopefully the CPAC listens and hears kind of the concerns, and I hope there's more public communication. I hope there's an agenda. I hope they have meeting minutes, and I hope that parents are welcome to go in and volunteer. So.
Do we have some good news?
We do. I didn't know we were done with that. Okay, so a couple of things. So the grade 5 through 12 All-Town Win Ensemble is performing at the Red Sox games, it's the Red Sox game on the 29th, and then later this year, Cardy Hall. So this is going to be unbelievable for this group. Also at the high school, and I hope I don't take away some of your thunder for some of the high school pieces, there's a New York City band called Lucky Chops, and they're stopping by on their international tour, and they're going to go see some of the music classes at Chelmsford High School. So that was really great for them to see that come through. And then also in PE news, we have a new adventure course, High Elements. There's a total of four High Elements for both courses and one at the McCarthy Middle School, so that's been completed this Friday. And then at the middle school, also, the teachers have received the pedometers. The teachers use the pedometers in their PE classes to gather data on how students are doing, their breathing, how active they are. So they're going to be using those both at McCarthy and Parker Middle School, so they're very excited to use these new products. And that's it. Oh, one more thing, I forgot. This Thursday, our National Honor Society students are coming over to work to put together the backpacks from the Rotary. The Rotary was so nice to donate a lot of materials for our students and backpacks for the elementary, middle, and high school. So they'll be coming through this Thursday to help us assemble all of those and get them to the schools.
That's in your office?
That's in my office. At 2:00, anybody would like to stop by, more than welcome. We have water, candy, there's all sorts of fun stuff there.
We'll be right back.
Great.
For the water and the candy.
Yeah, you can have whatever you want.
Did you ladies want to share any other news from the high school?
Sure, I can start. So the freshman activities fair is this Friday, so the clubs will be starting up next week. This way freshmen can get a feel for what's happening around the school. We have a deadline for changing classes. Those are closing this week, so everyone's kind of settling into their schedules now. The girls swim team tonight went 4-0. The boys soccer team is currently 2-1. The field hockey team is 5-1. Boys football is 2-0, and that's all I have.
And it's been also very busy for seniors recently. We've already met with our guidance counselors several times, and we have available college visits coming to the Career Center that we can sign up through Naviance, so we can revisit colleges we've visited on campus and meet with representatives. And for the Theater Guild, the Anything Goes is the musical this year, which will be going up in November, and the cast list for that will actually be posted this Thursday. And there's a production of a murder mystery going on this Friday.
Thank you very much. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. Jumping into new business this evening, the first item before you is an employee request for a waiver to the employee retirement benefit language within the contract. So about halfway through your packet is a request from a Chelmsford High School teacher, Ms. Sandholm. She had originally, last year, as way of background, submitted a letter of intent to retire in accordance with the contract, and then later revoked that notice to retire. That's a provision that's within our contract. Long story short, over the course of the summer, for some family matters, has decided she really needs to retire. So she isn't planning on retiring at this point in time and is requesting that the school committee waive the notice provision so that she may be able to participate in the early retirement benefit. I provide you a copy of the letter from Ms. Sandholm, as well as the contract language that pertains to this. It's really completely within the school committee's jurisdiction with regard to granting the waiver under Section 4-12F of the teacher's contract. So that matter is before you this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions you have with regard to this request.
Questions or discussion? Okay, I'll attend a motion to provide the waiver.
Sure. A motion to grant the notice provision waiver, Section 4-12F of the collective bargaining agreement.
Chairman, can I make a motion that we grant the notice waiver 4-12F for the early retirement of Cynthia Sandholm?
I'd like to second the motion for the waiver.
Any discussion on the motion as made? Hearing done?
It would be a roll call.
Okay, we'll have a roll call vote. This board, just start.
Aye.
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 Okay, unanimous. I'd like to thank Ms. Sandholm for her service to the Chelmsford School District. She's been with us for quite a long time, and wish her the very best as she deals with some challenging home situations.
Thank you. Excuse me, second item on the agenda this evening is the personnel report for August of 2017. It's a memo from Sherwicker Patrick, our Director of Personnel and Professional Learning, highlighting all the new hires to the district. As you can see from the list, we were very busy this summer adding a lot of new staff into positions. There was also a list of a few resignations that processed at the end of the school year over the summer, and there have been no retirements, you know, since the last correspondence that we provided to you. There were a few teachers within the district over the summer that changed positions, so the last page just highlights those changes. And again, we provide this report on a monthly basis just to show you some of the ins and outs of the district as far as staff and some of the staff moves, in case you see a face you thought was in one school and all of a sudden they're in another school. It, just as a way of helping out. But incredibly busy hiring season. I think everyone is situated well and in place for the start of the school year, so just conveying this information to you.
Do we have any teacher position that's not full-time?
Right now? Like an opening? No, they're all, no, we're completely full of teachers. We have a...
I hope so, I just checked.
Oh, no, no, we're, all of our, all of our teachers are on board.
Well, sometimes you have to start with temporary or whatever.
Oh, no, no, we're doing good on that front. No, we had, everyone was hired for the start of the school year. The one issue that we always run into is, not that it's a bad issue, but paraprofessionals in general, oftentimes they're competing for teaching jobs, and at the last minute they might get an offer to teach, which then opens up a parrot job. So we do some kind of blanket postings for paraprofessionals so that at the last minute we can do hirings. But all of our teachers were hired for the start of the school year, and were able to attend orientation and the kickoff day. And, you know, there's still some sporadic, you know, if a parrot does happen to get a teaching job, you can't, you know, blame them, and it's great if it's actually with us, because then they're kind of coming from within. But, no, we're in very good shape personally.
If I could just comment briefly, we were fortunate enough at Rotary yesterday to have the six marshals from last year's graduation speak. They're the top two people from each house, and they were absolutely fantastic. I can't say enough. And the reason I wanted to speak at this time when we're talking about personnel is the one common theme through all of their presentations was the quality of instruction that they had received and the personal connection that they felt with faculty and coaches and advisors, not only in the classroom but beyond the classroom. And you don't get that kind of comment across the board like that. And it wasn't, they singled out a lot of teachers, and there were some common, but because of people's different interests, there were a lot of teachers that were cited. And it's just reassuring, I think, and that's why I want to take a moment to share with you that the kids coming through Chelmsford High School are leaving saying great things about their teachers.
Third item on the agenda this evening is information regarding the Mass Association of School Committee's, the MASC policy review. At the last school committee meeting, the topic came up, and you would ask that I reach out to MASC to obtain information about contracting with them possibly to come in and perform a policy review. So I put a little cover memo together for you that just takes some of the excerpts from the contracts that they supplied out. But the MASC does provide this as a service to its member districts. There is a cost of $10,500 for the policy review. That is a one-time cost. They take the current policy, current policies of the committee that you would have. They would take other working documents within the district, like student handbooks, things along those lines, and take a copy of the recommended policies from the Mass Association of School Committee, kind of review the two, meld the two, and then they would meet with a subcommittee of the school committee over a number of meetings to actually review the recommendation to the changes. It can be anywhere from a, you know, 12-month to probably a year-and-a-half-long process. The meetings, you know, are substantial in length. They're a couple hours each, and they usually occur every six to eight weeks, just because of the amount of substance and material that's covered. For this one-time cost of 10-5, MASC does allow you to actually spread that out over three fiscal years for budgeting purposes, so you can pay $3,500 per year for three years to be able to accomplish that. They'll work with you to go as quickly or as slowly as you'd like through that review. So really, a lot of it is going to still be school committee time in reviewing the recommendations and figuring out how you want to move forward. A second service that they offer, and this was one that John had asked about, was the web hosting. So once you actually have a policy manual in place, for a one-time cost of $3,500, they will convert that policy manual into like a PDF-type searchable format and then put it up on their website, which you then provided a link. So our website would include a link to their website with the policies. And then on an annual basis, for $950, they would host the policies for you. Anytime you want to make a change after that, you supply them with a copy of the change, and they update the posting. But that would be a searchable database that would be a link off of our current website. So they had provided two contracts. One was for the policy review, the $3,500 a year for three years totaling 10-5. And then the second contract, you wouldn't actually get into in the first year because you wouldn't be able to publish anything to the web. That would probably come in in year two, and that would be a one-time cost of 3, $3,500, and then subsequently you'd be paying $950 a year to MASC for housing that. So a copy of that contract is attached as well, and providing this to you as information this evening for your review and discussion. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
So what are the benefits, drawbacks to going in this direction?
That's for you guys to discuss, right? I mean, as a committee. I'll start it off and say, you know, benefits are, it depends how you look at it. Benefits are you're basically contracting with a third party to come in and perform a, it's a thorough review of your existing policies. They take all of your existing documents, they map them against, you know, kind of national and state-recommended policies, and they basically go point-by-point through and say, you know, your policy is, you know, sufficient here. We recommend you add this because this is a new thing that came out since your last policy review. You know, here's a whole new policy that you don't happen to have because it was a new law that was just passed, and, you know, they, so they have the most current information on laws and regs. So that is the advantage. It's still in, requires a school committee participation, so there's still going to have to be a subcommittee of the school committee that sits and actually reviews these policies. So they're going to bring these recommendations, and the subcommittee is still going to have to sit and look at their recommendations and see if you want to bring these forward to the larger committee. So there's still work involved. It's not just a total kind of outsourcing of the policy, and they come back and you just kind of bless it. I do think you'd still want to go through the policies if we go this route and make sure that they still kind of live up to kind of the Chelmsford flavor that's in the policies. You know, there are some committees, like there are just some stock school committee policies that you can go out and just adopt, but they're really not tailored to the community. So I think if you went this route, you would still want to go through this to be able to really make sure that your policies are aligned with these national and state recommendations. I don't know if I answered your question, but just to get the conversation started.
So I just want to understand, so they're going to take our policies, they're going to put them in a searchable base, we're going to give up copyright to the work that we have worked on forever, and the goal is to make it searchable. Can't we just make it searchable? It used to be searchable. I don't understand where we lost that capability.
I think it's a little more than that.
I think it's more than that.
A lot more than that.
They say they're going to take our policies.
Right. The web hosting and the searchable aspect is kind of phase two. The phase one is the policy review. So them taking our policies, them taking the, this kind of the recommended policies, going side-by-side and seeing if there's anything, you know, missing or should be changed or should remain the same. That's kind of the first piece. That is actually the most time-consuming piece. Then after that, when you actually have your approved policies, it's just an extra service that you don't have to subscribe to it if you don't want to, but it's a service where they actually will basically almost manage that piece of your website with the policies and, again, have them be searchable. That's the extra $950 you pay a year for doing that. The committee could opt to do Part One, but not Part Two. I mean, you could do both, you could do neither, but they are two exclusive.
Can we get a price on how much it would cost to convert our policies and make them searchable? I wouldn't mind the analysis of our policies to see if there are any gaping holes. I think that's a great idea. But $950 a year, I've got to believe there's software out there that we can use to convert on our own website.
One-time fee.
Yeah.
No, it's annual.
$3,500 is one-time.
$950 a year is annual.
But the $950 allows you, you know, you call them up, they'll make the changes. I mean, it's not just...
The $950 is basically for them to host them.
To host it.
Right, so they're going to host them, they're going to maintain the backups and all that kind of stuff. We would have to see, you know, what it would cost us to come up with a program that's, you know, searchable, and, you know, I'm sure we could back it up, but we'd have to just weigh, you know, is it going to cost us more or less than $950 to buy a piece of software that does that? It's just, it's an option that they provide.
You know, I think with the laws that are ever-changing, and we just heard a passionate situation last school committee meeting, that there was a gray area in the policy. You know, there was, there was a understanding from certain people, it being read one way, and then an understanding from other people that it could be read another way. I just think this is what these people do. I had a lengthy conversation with Mr. Gilbert. We are in the minority of the schools in the state of Massachusetts that still do their own policies. When I explained and spoke to Mr. Gilbert, he was shocked that schools like Chelmsford, with our record, are still doing their own policies. These are professional people. This is what they do. They know the laws. They're able to adapt quickly and get the information from us. I just want us to understand that, you know, for a little bit of money, which, I'm not saying $10,000's a little bit, but the way they financed it over three years, we can certainly create it in our budget, to be up-to-date on the rules and regulations to keep the kids safe in the event there's an issue, I think it's well worth it. I don't think we should be doing our own policies. I think we should, we're going to have the input because they still have to come to us, so we, to your point, we'll have our flavor in there, but this is what they do. And if there's one mistake that we miss and there, and it's a law and we don't update it, well, I think there's a level of exposure there. For what? For $3,500 a year for the next three years? For a $3,500 one-time fee and $950 a year? To Barbara's point, I'd be happy to, you know, look at that, but $950 on a 50, what's our budget this year?
$7 million.
$57 million. $950, that's, I think in the whole scheme of things, I'd better, I wouldn't mind spending the $950 or the $10,000 over three years to make sure the kids always have up-to-date
Further discussion?
Just keep in mind, they're not writing our policy.
You still have to vote on it. I mean, you still have to bring it to the committee.
We're still responsible for the policies. We're the ones who have to continue to review and write them. They're not writing policy for us.
No, what they're doing is they're taking other policies. They're taking the newest laws. They're making sure that we're up-to-date, and if there's anything new, they're bringing it to our attention. But there's a comprehensive review, from what I understand, for the $10,000, that they'll review what we have in place, but it's up to us to endorse their suggestions or add anything to it. I don't know how we're losing control, because in the end, it's still up to us, but they're certainly going to bring knowledge that, that I think is really important in the event that there's an issue or a new law that's passed, and we're not up-to-date, it could affect a child's welfare.
They do send us those updates, you know. We get those updates if there's changes in law, and they tell us, they direct us to look at our policy. We get them.
Anyone else want to comment? Anyone else want to comment? I'd like to comment just briefly and point out that the action that's being considered here isn't out of any emergency situation or lack of work on behalf of the members of the committee and community who have been involved. I think last year, we, or the year before, time goes by, we covered 70 policies, I think. So I just want to point out, because sometimes people think that because we're considering something that something's wrong, and it's not the case. And I go so far as to be personal and point out that Evelyn Thorne has led, as you all know, maintaining the policy manual and keeping us up-to-date through, you know, a long time. And I think it's important for us to recognize that service, and also to keep in mind that this is being considered because of, you know, the changes in society, the demands on the school committee and so forth. So I guess that's enough.
I'll take it one step further, Mr. Thomas, Chairman Thomas. Evelyn has been a tireless contributor to the policymaking. She's worked very hard. She's no longer on the school committee, but yet she still donates her hours. But we're lucky to have someone like Evelyn, but the truth of the fact is, we are in the minority. If, you know, what we should be doing is looking to build a better mousetrap, not just maintain something, this is an opportunity for us to get better. You're right, it's not broken, but we can improve. And by being up-to-date and having what an organization, for example, what Mike Gilbert represents, they'll be able to keep us up-to-date of what's going on, which will just make us sharper, as opposed to, with all due respect, relying upon this school committee or volunteers to keep us up-to-date. And I just think, when you're talking about a child's welfare, if we miss one thing, or the policy isn't right, or it's not up to code, and we miss it because people go on vacations or things happen, I mean, they're going to, they're going to pick it up and they're going to keep us in line more than I think we can do. It's what they do. So it's not a question of we're failing, to your point, Mr. Chairman, it's a question of always improving.
I guess, before we entertain a motion, personally, I would like to see us support the first step, and to ask the superintendent to come back after communicating with our tech department and see what the cost would be, you know, or what the, what the challenge would be for the tech department to have their own. And then we'll, we can make, you know, we have time on that, if I understand correctly.
The second step is well a year away.
Yeah.
The second step doesn't have to happen.
Rather than barge ahead, you know, let's find out what our options are.
I just want to be clear on the liability issue. This does not relieve us from any liability. We can't turn around...
I don't think anybody said it would.
No, you did.
No, I did not say this relieves us from liability. What I said was, they have the most up-to-date understanding of what's going on. If, if we're not doing something and they bring it to our attention immediately, I think that's a good thing. I never said that they're responsible, they're taking the liability away. What they're doing is, they're improving our process of what it is today, because if we're depending on Ms. Thorne to continually write the policies or manage this, I don't think that's the best way to do this.
Evelyn's not on the committee.
Does Evelyn support us in the policy?
She helps with policy all the time.
She shows up at the, at the public meetings, but Al and I are the committee reps, and...
She doesn't assist with policy ever?
She has input, as any member of the policy who shows up can.
Yeah.
Okay, so...
She volunteers her time.
Thank you. All I'm saying is this, I did not say that Mike Gilbert of MAS-C assumes the liability. I think we are in the minority in the state of Massachusetts for doing it ourselves. I think that this organization can make our program better and keep us up-to-date. That's all I'm saying.
Further discussion? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, girls.
I'll entertain a motion to entertain a contract with the Massachusetts Association of School Committees Incorporated to conduct a policy review.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we enter into a contract to review our policies by the Massachusetts Association. Help me with the last one.
The school committees.
School committees, MAS-C.
I second the motion on the analysis of our current policies.
Okay. Again, any second thoughts or comments? Hearing none? We need a vote, because it's money, right? Dennis, would you start?
Aye.
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 Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you very much. Do you want anything else?
No, if you, if you want to leave the executive session and jump to the liaisons, then you can close.
Okay. What we would like to do at this point is give an opportunity for anyone who has a liaison report to give that, and then when we go into executive session, we will not come back into public session, so people won't have to hang around. Does anyone have any liaison or that sort of report to bring?
Not yet.
Almost.
Next week.
I attended the South Row PTO meeting, and it had a large turnout, and they were very happy with the pods. It was noted that they're somewhat smaller than the classroom space that they vacated, but the kids seemed to be excited about them. The issues are, you know, traveling to and from the building, and they're working it out. That's still, but it was, it was a good meeting, it was nice to be there.
Good. Anyone else? I'd just like to comment that, as many of you know, Heather Lindstad has been employed by the Alumni Association to lead their capital campaign, and their first event, which is more social and get-to-know-someone event, is I think October 15th at the Yalx, it's a cornhole tournament, and she's really gung-ho. She's planning later in the year, and superintendent was able to sit with us this afternoon, later in the year, to have a giving day, which I think has a lot of possibility for the district, not just for the association, but building sense of community. This is the way that Heather's approaching it, and if you have a chance to talk with her, do so, because she's got more enthusiasm than most people. So I think it, I think that the work that they're doing will be good things for the, for the whole district. All right, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session. I'd like to also, so everybody knows what we're doing, I'd like to go down to the dining room so that the lady who does all the pickup can pick up, and not have to stay here.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we go into executive session.
Need someone else to second the motion, I can't say.
Okay, motion made and seconded, all in favor, aye? Aye. And again, we will not return to open session.